Okay, good evening. And thank you for being here and welcome to the August 20th meeting of the governing body. I will call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilman Banks, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able, and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. We had invited Pastor Delmar White to come and do invocation for us tonight, but he had a crisis at his work. He's a chaplain at Midland Hospice, so I'll just ask us to stand for a moment of silence.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start with the agenda, and that is the first thing is roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
There's a delay between here and space.
Yeah. Takes a while for that to get all the way up in space there.
Councilmember Hiller? She's here. Baldivia Akla?
Here.
Ortiz? Banks?
Here.
Kell?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Dobler?
He made it.
He's here. Duncan? And Hofer?
Here.
Gotcha. We have eight present with councilmembers Ortiz and Duncan absent. Duncan.
I'm here. I'm here.
All right, we have nine, yes. Nine present. Here we go. It's gonna be one of those nights.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is a recognition that I want to read. We have some guests in the room with us today. I'm gonna come around here, and once I get placed, if you'll join me in this circle here, I know some pictures want to be taken, so I'm gonna come around. You wanna just join me up here? Hello, Dr. Mazescheck?
How are you?
Good.
Thank you for doing this.
Oh, you bet.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, well, I'm pleased to have you here as visitors, because it's especially pleasing for me to be on the Board of Regents, serving along with Dr. Mazescheck, and talk about Washburn Tech and all the good work that they do. So thank you very much for being here as well, and acknowledge your leadership. But it is proper that we give recognition at all levels of education, so that people see that we're getting our people prepared for life in the ways that they choose to serve. So this is a certificate of recognition for Washburn Tech Skills USA winners. Washburn Tech sent 29 competitors to the Skills USA Championships June 24th to 28th in Atlanta, Georgia. Eight students won medals in this national competition, which is a testament to their abilities and hard work, as well to the advisors and instructors who dedicate themselves to training tomorrow's workforce. A team of students claimed bronze in the Quiz Bowl, which is a college post-secondary division. Team members included Zevon Parakremer from Topeka Cabinet Millwork, Corey York from Silver Lake Information Systems Technology, William Sevy from Topeka Information Systems Technology, Alex Renanbaum from Topeka in Cabinet and Millwork, Eldon Maldonado from Topeka in Automotive Collision Repair, Aspen Lemon from Holton in Cabinet and Millwork, and Wyatt Rains, Topeka Automotive Collision Repair. In addition to the Quiz Bowl medal winners, Bailey Longstaff from Ottawa won a silver medal in T-shirt design. She recently completed Tech's Automotive Collision Repair program. That's pretty significant, winning all those medals and awards. The Skills USA Championship is an annual competition that showcases the best career and technical education students in the nation. More than 6,500 contestants, all-state winners, competed hands-on in 110 different trade, technical, and leadership fields. Nearly 2,000 judges and contest organizers from labor and management make the national event possible. Congratulations to these talented competitors from Washburn Tech, whose goal is to train and prepare a highly skilled workforce that can sustain and grow our economy. In witness whereof, I do hereby affix my official signature and official seal of the City of Topeka, Kansas, on this 20th day of August 2024. Congratulations to everything that you've accomplished and will accomplish in the future. Congratulations. William?
Yep.
This is for you. Would you like to say a few words? Is there a spokesperson besides Dr. Mazescheck?
I think I'm the only one that they want to speak tonight. I don't know why. I don't know why. But I want to say thank you very much, Mayor, for recognizing these students, and to the City Council for recognizing. We are excited to be able to lift up these students. It is the Olympics of the United States for technical skills, and we had quite a few award winners, and we stood out. And I hope that because it's such an important part of our community, most of our students, our graduates, stay right here in this part of Kansas, and we're creating the workforce of the future, and they are truly the best in the nation. And so we're very excited to have them recognized tonight, thanks to all of you for your hard work and accomplishments.
Can anybody look my way for just a minute? Yeah? Do you wanna crowd in a little bit? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Another round of applause, please.
And just a quick follow-up. You know, we do a pretty good job of encouraging young people to go to college, the traditional four-year college, and that's good. But I think more and more nationwide, we're seeing that there's a real big need to really put a lot of emphasis on technical skills outside of the college environment and in the technical skills that in many professions, we are lacking the people available to help this economy move forward. So it's really significant that we are able to do that here in Topeka, and I hope most of them will stay here in Topeka. So thank you for joining me in the recognition of these young people and what they did today. So next on the agenda is presentations. Madam Clerk?
The first presentation we have, Topeka Metropolitan Transit Authority, the TMTA Budget Update.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting us make the presentation this evening. I'm Rod Miller. I'm one of the appointed board members. With me tonight is our General Manager, Robert Nugent, our CFO, Richard Adlance, and our Chairman, Scott Tompkins. I hope you've all been given a copy of our presentation. We were asked to give a quick talk about, thank you, about the why we're exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. And our first slide, I'm assuming that's this middle button? No.
That's the side one.
Whoops. There we go. Just to kind of give you a relative spot of where we sit in terms of the ad valorem taxes, roughly for a city member, or a citizen taxpayer, we're roughly a little more than 2.5% of what their ad valorem taxes, or what they pay on a yearly basis. We fit kind of between the library and between the airport authority, with 4.2 mils is what we've collected over the last 10 years since 2012. And I think there's a charter ordinance that I think specs that out for us. So, and that's actually on the next slide. And I gotta quit mashing the button that hard, I guess. Typically, our operating budget is about $12.5 million. Half of that goes to wages, salaries, benefits, those types of things, and the other half goes into operations. You know, fuel's roughly about 3/4 of a million dollars. Maintenance is gonna be close to $2 million this year for buses and facilities. So it kind of has the way to trickle up as we get to that $2.5 million. Our budget actually had to be presented to the FTA on July 1st of this year, so we're already in the middle of our operating year. We actually won't get any ad valorem taxes until we're almost seven and a half months into our budget year. So we operate kind of, you know, with our budget being a moving target, if you will. We actually don't get paid any federal grants, operating grants, or capital grants until actually we expend the money and then we're reimbursed. So, you know, there's some checks and balances on their part about how we spend federal dollars along with state dollars, along the same way. Typically, in a year, we'll only receive about 3/4 of a million dollars in fares. Ridership has been down over the last decade. We used to get almost 1.1 million, but after COVID, it hasn't bounced back quite all the way where it was. So typically, our ridership happen to be folks who happen to have to ride the bus. I mean, it's not an easy way to get across town. It's about an hour ride, and it's about a 15-minute drive if you have a car. So in terms of affordability, typically, the average vehicle in the United States costs about $26 a day to own. If you assume in Topeka that maybe it's half that, say $13 or so, or maybe just $10, that's $300 a month to own a vehicle. An unlimited month-long pass on the metro only costs $50. So we're pretty inexpensive when it comes to terms of transportation. If you happen to qualify for a low-income pass, for a monthly pass, it's only $35. So it's an affordable way to move from place to place in town. But there are big swaths of the city that we actually don't serve. We, you know, when you think of our infrastructure, there are large thoroughfares going east and west, a couple going north and south, and if you think from probably 17th Street north to Sixth Street, we have fairly dense service, and probably from 17th Street south, it's pretty interspersed. I mean, 21st Street and then 29th, and then in some parts, we get to 37th Street. So it can be a long walk from somebody's residence or place of work to where one of the bus routes is. So, you know, we don't have the density that, say, a New York City or Chicago does, where we can run a grid work system to make it convenient for somebody to ride the bus. If you're gonna ride the bus in Topeka, it's because you normally have to, and that's one of the lessons we took away from COVID. Ridership did drop for a while because schoolchildren didn't ride the bus, because we allow, we used to sell tickets to 501, but right now, we allow schoolchildren with an ID to ride for free. But basically, our ridership bottomed out about 60% of what it was. Where nationwide, it dropped almost 20%. So we have a certain core ridership that has to use us. So we don't think of ourselves as a social service agency, but we used to have a board member who would always admonish us that when we made decisions, you know, we need to decide whether we're a social service agency, whether we're a for-profit corporation, or whether we're a utility. And we kind of came to the conclusion, obviously during COVID, that we're more of a social service agency. We take those folks who have to use us, not the folks who choose to use us. So as it comes down to the revenue-neutral rate, I can give you lots of reasons why we're gonna exceed that this year. You know, we just came through contract negotiations last year. Our salary increase for our represented employees is about $400,000. Our amount that we're gonna exceed the revenue-neutral rate is roughly $300,000. Fuel costs are higher also this year, along with health insurance. So I can give you almost any number of reasons why we're gonna be over that, just because inflation is inflation. And again, 53% of what we do is based around our employees and the folks who operate our system. We do have, and I think we've handed out to you some of our capital projects that we have going on. Our capital budget is separate. It's about $5 million. We have matching funds from the federal government, and we can push some of those off if you so decide that you don't think we ought to go beyond the revenue-neutral rate. But some of those are based around, you know, matching funds, and sometimes, you know, I think some of them are on sidewalks, or, let me just take a quick look here. Yeah, sidewalks, or backup generator for Quincy Street, the one place where we interface with our ridership is at Quincy. So when the phones go down, the electricity goes out, we can't answer the phone when somebody's trying to make a paratransit reservation or something like that. So that's kind of deemed a place that we're gonna need to have backup electricity. Or some of the sidewalk improvements, as we do bus stops and shelters, we also partner with the city's planning department to improve some of the sidewalks, because there are a lot of places in town where, when they were developed, they either didn't put sidewalks or the sidewalks are in disrepair. And that's, again, a federally funded project, and we basically pay 20% of that, and the feds pay 80% of it. So we can push those off or not do them. Those would be the things probably that we'd probably look at first. And at that point, I would entertain questions, because the budget's deep and thick, and I'll let you pick on me as much as you like.
Okay, thank you, sir. Questions from the body? Is there anybody online too that may have some questions? Just real quickly, you mentioned access and talked about sometimes it's a long walk to get to the bus service, and I think that that's a big thing for me, to really look at the access that we have. I know that we have, in some places, southeast part of town, that they could probably use an additional stop in that High Crest area. I know we've talked about that on occasion, and I know the difficulty there, and I know the response. We have, you've come up with a good idea with the mod program, and that has helped alleviate some of that.
Well, and as we look at the infrastructure inside of both the High Crest and Highland Park neighborhoods, they're not really conducive to have buses on the street. My grandparents lived in Highland Park. I can imagine driving a bus down that, one of those streets, and having to paint every car that we hit, you know, because they're not very wide. So, you know, the mod service basically is a door-to-door service. We'll pick you up at your door, if you're in that service area, and take you to one of our bus stops, or one of our, actually, any other address inside of that service area, or take you to where the fixed route is, because, you know, again, lack of sidewalks, lots of accommodations in those areas to allow that. That's been a two-year experiment for us to see how it works. We thought maybe some ridership would come off the route that goes down Illinois Street. It hasn't. That's actually, or Indiana, actually, that's increased, ridership on the Indiana route has increased, and we have about 40, is that right, 40 or 70? I can't, it's about 800 rides a month for people who use mod right now in that particular area. So we're still measuring that. I mean, it's not like a fixed route where we have like 19 people an hour ride, but I think our goal is, if it looks much like the Lyft, which is our paratransit service, if we get to two people an hour, I think we're thinking that's probably a success, because that's about what we take on the Lyft system also, so in terms of ridership per hour. So, you know, I think the wait time has been anywhere from eight to about 10, 12 minutes. So once you request a ride, it's a pretty quick turnaround.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. You made mention of potential cuts as, I don't know, did you show the slide down there for bus operator overtime? Are you currently fully staffed for your bus operators?
No, no. And so that's probably, if we cut overtime, I'd have to cut service. So we don't have enough drivers, so that's, yeah.
How understaffed?
We could probably use another four drivers.
What is your overtime annually looking at?
Annually, well, it was scheduled to be like $150,000, and it turned out to be closer to $300, I think, last year. So, yeah, it's a chunk.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Serious about the expansion in the sense of your, you say you're four short right now. How do you plan to, is it your pledge to have those four, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so what's your thoughts and what's your plans on your responsibility?
Well, this can have been a work in progress. When I started on the board, say, 14 years ago, we were turning people away. Now, it's the, like everybody else, we're having a hard time finding people who want to, or employees who want to become bus drivers. It's kind of like a knife fight in the phone booth when it comes down to employees. During the training period, they don't get paid much, and it only takes about two years, though, to get them to the top rung, which I think is like $26 to $28 an hour. So it doesn't take long to get there, but again, because of the way that the workday is structured for those who begin, they're basically, you can think of it being on the on-call list, if you will, but they don't know what their schedule is on any particular day. So sometimes, they may be showing up six days a week and working six hours one day, four hours the next, and, you know, having to come back the next day and not exactly knowing what their schedule looks like. So it's not a warm and fuzzy job, if you will, to be at the bottom of the seniority totem pole, but over time, you can work your way up, but that's kind of part of our representative contract, so there's, we don't have a lot of wiggle room there when it comes to that. It seems to be a bit punishing, but again, there didn't seem to be a lot of movement in that particular bit. But actually, over the last year or so, we've got a lot more traction on getting employees in and trained, you know, they have learned, get their CDL, they have to go through a couple, well, several weeks of training. So it's actually getting much better than it was, say, three years ago. So I'm actually optimistic about being closer to fully staffed within the next year, which is good, because, you know, again, we have an older workforce and we have several, you know, operators retiring every year. So it's one of those that we need to be focusing more on the future and hiring more as we go forward. Did that answer your question? Okay.
I was at the Kansas Public Transit Organizations Conference this morning with there. I think you had about 140, 150 people there in attendance, and I saw some representation from Topeka. So I appreciate that you're there, getting involved, because I think that the opportunity to share other ideas and different ways of looking at how we service our communities is a great idea. So I'm glad that you guys are participating.
Well, thank you. It's kind of like part of our capital acquisition, you know, with what happened during COVID, most of the folks who make the small paratransit buses, the cutaways, they got into the school bus business and got basically out of the paratransit-type vehicles. So it's very difficult for us to replace those types of vehicles, or anybody else in the state to replace those vehicles. So the states actually, you know, are working together with other properties and the state to find other resources that we can use to have those vehicles available. Like our fleet right now, we have, I think, four that need to be replaced, and they're pushing 200,000 miles for a vehicle that the FDA tells us is a 100,000-mile vehicle.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I do have one more question. So I see with the electric vans, seven charging infrastructures and employee training, electric buses, et cetera, and you made mention that, you know, you more or less classify yourself as a social service agency, but what are you doing, thinking ahead to the future, especially with, I'm sure these electric vans and buses are energy efficiency and are maybe even a tiny, tiny nod at climate change issues that we're going through, even though we may not want to state climate change, but I said it. So with this, what are you doing to look forward to actually try to get more working folks in the downtown area or the area where your routes are, encouraging them to actually take the bus? I know Topeka is a truck and, you know, sedan and whatever kind of place, but, I mean, how are you looking forward to that possibility of engaging that particular new clientele?
Well, again, we spent several years chasing the choice rider, which really didn't pan out for us in terms of ridership. We spent a lot of money doing Wi-Fi and some other accoutrements on the buses, you know, to make it, I don't know if you've ridden them, the buses are nice, they're clean, they're very efficient, our operators are some of the greatest people in the world. But again, it takes a long time to get, you know, from southwest 29th Street to downtown is a 35-minute ride on the bus. So again, the convenience part of it begins to become a hurdle for us. So again, our ridership is gonna be those folks who are maybe disaffected or have some reason why they can't, or it's just they have one vehicle, and maybe we can make it easier for them to get to the bus or use the bus. But that's always a challenge, that population seems to change and ebb and flow, where they live, and Topeka, whether I think, whether you believe it or not, seems to be a fairly well-integrated, you know, socially and economically. I mean, on the Wanamaker Quarter, there's seven low-income housing projects within, you know, rock-throwing distance. So there's a lot of folks that, you know, it's not east-west, north-south, it's all over the city. And if you think about the way we operate right now, we're set up as the private operator was in the 1960s. If you think of a big circle or a big square, we pulse, we run a pulse system, so all our buses leave the station at the same time and run out to the end. So we have some routes that are in the northeast part of town that are roughly a 30-minute route, they're out and back in 30 minutes. Ones that go southwest, takes about an hour five, hour 10. So if you're riding that bus, a lot of times, you're gonna miss your connection downtown, which isn't very good. So again, one of, you know, I know folks have talked to us about moving off the river. To us, it's where could we move so that we pulse that it's gonna be more efficient for those folks who ride? If we can get it down to a 30-minute ride each way, that's great. But right now, with the way we're situated and the way we operate, whether it's a historical deal that we're at, yeah, we probably need to come up with some other ways to operate that don't rely on a single pulse point.
I think it's interesting that you've been having the conversation, and I just think that it'll be interesting to see if those conversations will, you know, continue and if it would spark, you know, movement in the future to whether that would mean you to whether that would mean you all move to a different place or, you know, because definitely, energy efficiencies are becoming more and more important. But at least the dialogue is starting.
And the electric vehicles for us right now, they're a testbed. I mean, to be full transparency, our first set, our first contractor, they went bankrupt. And whether we're obligated to buy buses from the folks who bought them, we're not really sure at this point. But we've spent what I think is an obscene amount of money getting ready for that. So, we ended up getting another federal grant. So, we were able to buy four more off actually a proven and tested supplier who's going to provide us with four more, which we should have sometime, maybe January or February of next year. And, you know, the smaller Lyft vehicles that we looked at, we're looking at them because the original equipment manufacturer, namely, I think it's Ford, basically makes an electric transit van that we can put a lift in the back rather than having a cutaway where somebody has to cut the guts out of the thing and, you know, and they have to redo the entire vehicle. And basically, at this point, those are two hundred thousand dollars, which is about, which is a little bit more than what the Ford Transit electric deal is. So, you're like, well, hey, actually, it's a cheaper route for us. So, that's why we're there. I mean, you know, you can make the argument that we're trying to be green and be proactive, but that's a financial choice at this point.
Seeing no further questions, I thank you for your presentation, sir.
All right, thank you.
Move on now to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
A is approval of planning and land use development contract between the City of Topeka and Development Strategies Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand dollars. B, our minutes of the regular meeting of August thirteenth, 2024, and there are no applications.
For the consent agenda, Redd, entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor.
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. You call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Kell?
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
Motion is carried, and we move on to Agenda Item Five. Action item, Mr. Clerk will read.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, authorizing and providing for the issuance of twenty-three million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand aggregate principal amount of combined utility revenue bonds, Series 2024B of the City of Topeka, Kansas, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Josh McInarney, and our financial advisor will take us through this item.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, everybody. So, what you're approving tonight, this isn't the first, is an ordinance authorizing the issue of bonds for utility projects that have already been authorized in the CIP. Those include water main replacements, a storm conveyance system project, nutrient removal, and then forest main projects. And I'm going to pass it over to Kaylin to talk about the results of the day's sale.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Similar to your list last week, we are, I am Kaylin Dwyer with Columbia Capital. We're the city's financial advisor and we help facilitate bond financings and advise on that process and administer the bond auctions. So, this morning, like Josh indicated, we sold twenty-three point five seven five million in bonds for utility projects. The sale was very successful. We actually had six bids, excuse me. The winning bid was submitted by Truist Securities, which is an investment bank out of North Carolina, for a true interest cost at four point oh one percent. The cover bid was just two and a half basis points north of that at four point oh three six percent. And then, the last-place bid was four point two five percent. So, we had a range of bids, the winning bid being right at four point oh one percent. And that true interest cost is the average interest cost of the bonds through their life and is the lowest. They won the deal. So, with that, happy to take any questions you might have about this item.
Any questions for anybody? Is there a motion to consider?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Kell.
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. You call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
Motion carried, and we move on to Action Item Five. Madam Clerk?
B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, prescribing the form and details of and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of twenty-three million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand aggregate principal amount of combined utility revenue bonds, Series 2024B of the City of Topeka, Kansas, previously authorized by the ordinance of the issuer, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
City Manager?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Josh McInarney. Kaylin will take us through this item as well.
Thank you, City Manager. So, this resolution confirms that the same project's approved by the ordinance that was just approved and sets the date of the bond sale.
Any questions at all? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Miller. Second by Deputy Mayor. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And Dobler?
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
Okay, motion is carried. Move to Action Item Five, C. Madam Clerk?
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, annexing land to the City of Topeka, Kansas in accordance with KSA 12527, located at thirty-five thirty-three and thirty-five thirty-six Northwest Twenty-Fifth Street within unincorporated Shawnee County, Kansas, and adjacent to the City of Topeka Corporate Limits, and said land being annexed for all city purposes.
City Manager?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Dan Warner, our findings.
Hello, Dan.
Good evening, Mayor. Governing body, this annexation request comes from J.A. Flecker. The applicant is constructing a building and wants to connect the City of Topeka Water and Sewer. Property is owned industrial. It will retain that industrial zoning upon annexation. In addition, the applicant's required to execute a plat, a subdivision plat for the property. They're going through that process, that's an administrative process. The property is contiguous to the city boundary on the west side, and the owner has consented to annexation. Annexations of this type may be approved with an ordinance adopted by the governing body. Planning Commission reviewed the annexation and determined it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Dan? Anybody online have any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by the Deputy Mayor, second by Councilman Kell. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
And Duncan. Okay, we have eight, oh, yeah.
Sorry, there we go.
Nine yes, the motion carries.
Move to Action Item Five, D. Madam Clerk?
D is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, amending the district map preferred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section eighteen fifty zero fifty of the Topeka Municipal Code on seventeen point forty-nine acres located at the corner of the intersection of Southwest Topeka Boulevard and Interstate four seventy, on property addressed as thirty-eight forty-seven Southwest Topeka Boulevard from R-one Single Family Dwelling District and C-four Commercial District, Alta PUD Planned Unit Development District, Limited C-four Commercial District Uses and M-three Multiple Family Dwelling District Use Groups.
Okay, City Manager?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Dan Warner, Planning Division Director will take us through this item.
Mayor, governing body, excited to talk about this project. So, the property in question here is currently vacant. It's about seventeen acres. The property is already zoned, for the most part, commercial. The purpose of the PUD in this case is to allow for a mix of uses, so possibly residential along with commercial uses and also to develop a master sign plan for that property. This project represents a complete redevelopment of that site from what was there previously. And as you can see on the PUD master plan, that's on the right side of that slide. And there's just one tenant identified so far for this development, that is QuickTrip. The applicant held a neighborhood information meeting that was well-attended. Planning Commission held a public hearing and approved the PUD unanimously. Staff recommends approval as well.
Okay, any questions for Dan? I'm going to read that the council has options on this particular item. Your options are, one, to approve the Planning Commission's recommendations, reject or amend the Planning Commission's recommendation, or remand back to the Planning Commission for this item. So, is there a motion to entertain?
Move to approve.
Councilman Kell moves to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Miller. We call the roll, please.
This is what got ex parte. We got ex parte communication?
Yep.
Any ex parte communication, Mr. Mayor?
I didn't have any indication. Okay. I see it. I see it. Okay, prior to voting then, each member of the governing body who has engaged in ex parte communication with any individual either in favor of or against the matter being considered must state that the communication occurred and indicate that even in light of having engaged in the communication, they were able to fairly, objectively, and impartially consider the measure based upon the evidence provided on the record. The record includes the Planning Commission minutes, the staff report and its attachments, the public comments made during the Planning Commission, and several, excuse me, and similar relevant information related to the matter. Myself, I will reveal that I have had conversations about this project and I can continue to fairly and objectively make a vote in this matter. Any other ex parte communications to reveal from the governing body? Online, are there any? See any? Okay, seeing none. Now, we can entertain a motion from the governing body.
We have a motion to approve.
Have the motion in a second. You call the roll, please.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Hofer?
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Excited about that project. Okay, we'll move on now to Five, E. Madam Clerk?
He is acceptance of land dedications in the final plat for Sunflower Crossing subdivision on property containing seventeen point forty-nine acres of the northwest corner of the intersection of Southwest Topeka Boulevard and Interstate four seventy within the City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Dan Warner, Planning Division Director will take us through this item.
Thank you, City Manager. So, Sunflower Crossing subdivision is related to the previous PUD zoning case. The subdivision is a major plat, which means the Planning Commission approves this and then your role. So, this plat establishes lot lines, easements, and includes new street right-of-way through that development. The Planning Commission approved this subdivision plat at their July meeting. The governing body's role in this process is whether or not to accept dedication of easements or rights of way with that subdivision. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dan? Madam Clerk, I want to check, make sure, on this particular item, it indicated in this location I had an ex parte. There's nothing required, okay. That's why I missed the first one. Okay, all right. So, do we have any motion to entertain?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Kell.
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. If you call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
And Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Move back to Action Item F. Madam Clerk?
Have this established in a public hearing date of September tenth, twenty twenty-four for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed City of Topeka twenty twenty-five operating budget, setting the maximum expenditure limits, and authorize the publication of the public hearing notice.
City Manager?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Josh McInarney, our Budget Manager will take us through this item.
Thank you, City Manager. So, what you're approving tonight is just setting the public hearing date for the twenty twenty-five budget. This isn't to be confused with the already-set revenue-neutral rate. That's a separate hearing that will also be included on the same night. This hearing more is for general budget items, ideas. Even though the two are kind of quasi-related and they can speak on the levy on each, this one just is specifically for the general overall budget. And then, that hearing is scheduled for September tenth here at six P.M. And essentially, like that has already been approved, this sets the upper limits of what the middle levy can be, which is what's posted in the newspaper. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions or move to approval.
Any questions for Josh? Motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Miller. Second by Councilman Banks. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiller?
Yes.
We have nine yes, motion carries.
Okay, motion carried, and we move to Action Item Five, G. Madam Clerk?
G is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, authorizing initiation of condemnation proceedings to acquire permanent right-of-way easements for water line replacement on Northeast Curtis.
Deputy Minister?
I see that G, H, I, and J are all eminent domain and wondering if this would be the time where I could make a motion to roll them into one for one vote as opposed to going through each one separately?
As these are all separate ordinances, they do need to be voted on separately.
They do need to be. Okay, thank you.
Previously, we had them in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, again, Five, G. You have to remind me.
Brexton's ready to present, if there's any questions.
Thank you. Brexton, go ahead.
Yes, Five, G is a straightforward condemnation, and this is because the owner is deceased.[1694.91] some grading, because as part of reconstruction of this alley, we need to do a lot of cut, because the alley is very, very steep and puts the people's vehicles in danger of damage. During our neighborhood meeting, I was able to meet with the husband. Unfortunately, I was able to talk with him in his native language and explain the project to him, explain the need for the easement. During that meeting, he explained to me that he and his wife are going through divorce, and that the title to the property is solely in her name, and that he did not know whether she would be willing to grant this easement, and again, it is a temporary easement. I offered, I provided my card. I offered to meet with her and to be able to speak with her in her native language as well, to explain the project. No contact whatsoever. We, through a third-party intermediary, have asked for her and reminded her to be able to talk to me so that we can do this. We are at the point where this project cannot go through until and unless we condemn, again, this is for temporary easement to allow for grading to tie in. I'd like to move forward with this project, because the rest of the people that live along this block really need it to be able to safely get in and out and use that alley.
Any questions for Braxton? Councilman Miller?
Could you explain again how long you think temporary is?
Temporary would basically get us through the construction of the project, at which point the temporary easement disappears.
Right, but I mean, the timeline of the project, if you were to s-
On this alley project, assuming the weather cooperates with us, two months to be able to get in, remove the existing alley, pour the new alley. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Ian Young, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Banks, second by Councilman Kell. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiller?
Yes.
We have nine yes, motion carries.
Motion carried. We move to action item five G. Madam Clerk.
G is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, authorizing initiation of condemnation proceedings to acquire temporary easements for an entrance relocation and construction near southeast Twenty-Sixth Street and southeast California Avenue.
Mr. Braxton?
So this one is interesting. Councilmember Banks and his predecessor for District Four have contacted my office to basically talk about the dangerous conditions that we have along California Avenue for people trying to get in and out of the club car wash on busy days. We actually came up with a design to move their drive approach north to a position where it would allow them to use the frontage road to stack the vehicles to be able to get in and out of the car wash. We met with the NIA, we explained the project, they were very supportive of it. Went to the property owners, they said that they were supportive of the project. We provided them with the documentation, and they basically came back and said, "We need ten thousand dollars for the easement for club car wash." We explained to them that we're paying, or this project is going to cost us approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to fix a problem that was caused by them and their use, and that for that reason, we were not interested in paying ten thousand dollars to them for an easement, particularly when the drive approach that I'm going to close is going to be moved simply north on the property. So there is no harm to them from this project, other than they want to get ten thousand dollars out of the city. I find that offensive, and for that reason, God made condemnation, and we will let the appraisers determine what they should be, what value, if any, they should be given for me moving their drive approach north to solve a problem that they have caused. With that, I would gladly ask for you to approve this project to let me take these people to condemnation.
Any questions? Motion to entertain? Councilman Banks?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, thank you. I think that this project greatly benefit our area, and I make motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilman Banks, second by Deputy Mayor. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Miller?
Emphatically, yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
I'll think about it.
Yes.
Baldivia Akala?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Kell?
Yes.
We have nine yes, the motion carries.
Okay, motion carried. We move to action item five J. Madam Clerk.
J is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, authorizing initiation of condemnation proceedings to acquire an easement for public infrastructure improvements in the High Crest neighborhood from southeast Thirty-seventh Street to southeast Thirty-first, and from the Land and Nature Trail to southeast Adams Street.
Mr. Copley?
Thank you. The last in our series of condemnation cases for this evening. This is one where we have been unable to make any contact with the owner of record of this real estate. For that reason, we simply need to have the court quiet title for us so that we can take an easement that we need to be able to do, the waterline project in the High Crest neighborhood. With that, I'll gladly stand for any questions and ask for your approval.
Any questions? Seeing none, motion to entertain? Councilman Banks?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, thank you. I think that this project greatly benefit our area, and I make motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilman Banks, second by Deputy Mayor. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Miller?
Emphatically, yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
I'll think about it.
Yes.
Baldivia Akala?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Kell?
Yes.
We have nine yes, the motion carries.
Okay, motion carried. We move to action item five J. Madam Clerk.
J is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, authorizing initiation of condemnation proceedings to acquire an easement for public infrastructure improvements in the High Crest neighborhood from southeast Thirty-seventh Street to southeast Thirty-first, and from the Land and Nature Trail to southeast Adams Street.
Mr. Copley?
Thank you. The last in our series of condemnation cases for this evening. This is one where we have been unable to make any contact with the owner of record of this real estate. For that reason, we simply need to have the court quiet title for us so that we can take an easement that we need to be able to do, the waterline project in the High Crest neighborhood. With that, I'll gladly stand for any questions and ask for your approval.
Any questions? Seeing none, motion to entertain?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Banks. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Baldivia Akala?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, motion carries.
Okay, motion's carried. We move to five K. Madam Clerk.
K is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, adding a new section concerning truck routes to Chapter ten point seventy, trucks and trailers of the Topeka Municipal Code.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, we'll continue with the Braxton-Copley Show.
Thank you. Dan has shared the truck route map on the screen. Councilmembers have come to me because we've had some issues with cut-through traffic in terms of semi-vehicles driving through residential neighborhoods. And so I circled staff together, and we did a little Q-two work, and basically looked at what were the best practices. And the range of them go from establishing by map the truck routes where trucks are allowed to travel. On the other end of the spectrum, in Wichita, they actually have passed an ordinance where they specifically list streets on which trucks are not able to drive. Johnson County, they have created ordinances where they designate by ordinance the specific streets where trucks are allowed to travel. I think that this paradigm, where our GIS-based map is the cleanest, the streets that we have chosen are the arterial, the principal arterial streets in the city of Topeka, as well as we have clearly indicated that the federal and state highways, including I-435, Seventy, Twenty-four Highway, also are appropriately designated as truck routes. Our intent, in terms of enforcement, is to do this surgically, and that is where we have specific residential areas where we have complaints about commercial trucks, and we're talking about the large trucks greater than twenty-six thousand gross vehicle weight traveling on those streets. We would go in and post those streets as prohibited for trucks over twenty-six thousand GVW to give us the ability to enforce surgically. I do not intend to post every street in the city that no trucks or trucks are allowed. I don't think that we need to go to that time and expense of doing that. I think that this gives us the ability, on a case-by-case basis, to enforce. We do have ample exceptions in this ordinance that would allow for someone to leave a truck route if they need to make a delivery to or pick up something from a house or a business, that they can leave the truck route. We know that we're going to have a lot of cut-through traffic once we start the PQV project. This will give us a tool in our toolbag to be able to help with the enforcement, to be able to, through enforcement, get people to drive on the roads that are designed to carry those heavy loads. With that, myself and Amanda will stand for any questions. There are a lot of public works policy questions, but there are a lot of legal questions surrounding this particular ordinance.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Obviously, this is my bad for not getting with you sooner on this, but I'm definitely going to set something up with you, because I would like to see how it's going to impact the district that I represent, and the map is just too dang small to look at. So, but after the posting of the signs, and then what's additional enforcement after that? I mean, how about if they do it and they keep doing it? So is it somebody, and obviously, I don't know this part of the law, is it somebody calling it in and going, they're driving down here again, or is it a cop that happens to pass by and see that they shouldn't be driving down there? I mean, how will that be enforced?
So the police chief will also play a significant role in this, and that will be through, largely through the enforcement of his motorcycle unit, in terms of, once we get, start getting complaints, then it would be to have a presence out there in terms of, to serve as a deterrent, right, to be able to ticket those. And then I'll defer to Amanda in terms of whether there's any sort of step-up provisions in this, if someone were to repeatedly offend and be cited for that.
There are not provisions for like a repeat habitual violator, although, I mean, it is a traffic ticket, so there are penalties, especially on your license, if you're getting repeated tickets and you have a CDL. But like Director or Assistant City Manager Copley said, we work closely with the Police Department, so that when you're sending complaints to Public Works or the City Manager's office to work and set up targeted traffic enforcement in those areas where you're seeing a repeat problem.
Okay, and so my suggestion, request, would be in the areas that this is going to be impacted, where there is not going to be the allowance of these large trucks to come through, that either NIAs be given the information, that somehow this is designated, so that folks in these neighborhoods will see it through media, or through NIAs, or to get an understanding that this has, this is coming down the pike, and, because I think it will be a relief for folks to understand that they're not going to have to worry about increase. And I have to check to see if one street in particular that I'm thinking about in District Two is going to be impacted, but I think it would be beneficial to make sure there's a way to get this out into community, that this is going to be happening with the specific areas that people are going to be able to readily identify. Thank you.
I would agree with Deputy Mayor. I think it's important for us to get that information out in every kind of media that we can, beyond the NIAs, our Facebook page, in any way that we can, because I think it's important for us to let them know what's going to occur, and they can be the eyes and ears for the Police Department for those violators who may not want to stay within those boundaries. Councilman Kell?
I know you said there should be exceptions for, you know, times and places. I'd almost like to see Southwest Thirty-seventh and Southwest, South Park added to that, because in my district, we have Brown's tow service, and they're pretty much right at the end from Thirty-seventh down to South Park. They're right there, and they have some very heavy trucks that haul like the semis and things like that. To me, I think that should kind of just be added on there, just to, to take care of that with all the other semi-traffic that happens right there in that quarter-mile stretch of road that we have right there. There's just a lot of heavy, heavy vehicles, trucks with heavy gross volume weight that just travel that every single day, so this way, I think it should be a good exemption area also.
So help me understand, do you want us to post that, to keep trucks off of it?
No, no, to add that onto the, onto the non-restricted list, where you have the arterials?
Correct.
I have, I just, I live two blocks away from there. I see semis all the time. Brown's is constantly in and out. They have some of their heavier trucks at that Thirty-seventh and South Park. There's, all those are industrial right there, up until, up until you get to the Mobile Home Park right there, which is not South Park anymore, so it's like Thirty-eighth into Thirty-seventh on there, because to me, just, when you have that case-by-case basis, when it's an everyday occurrence, I just think we should just add that on there.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that. We've had very, I've had very robust discussions with many councilmembers about adding additional streets in terms of truck designation, and I'm hesitant to do so, because right now, my starting point is, I'm only designating the arterial streets, and those streets that we have specifically designed for and have constructed to carry it, and not branching out to collectors, because then it becomes more discretionary in terms of, why am I adding this collector but not this collector? And then, and so I would really prefer to keep it at the arterials. We, we were very intentional, and these discussions have been going on for months, where we started, engaged staff, and that was legal, Public Works, Traffic Engineering, and PD at the table, in terms of, how do we come up with a tool to be able to help address a problem and to do it in a laser fashion? And we were really careful in terms of crafting those exceptions, so that if Brown's towing company needs to drive to their business, or needs to make a stop, they have the absolute right to be able to drive on something other than those streets, but for the most part, we want to keep this simple and straightforward, in terms of, we want you to stay on our arterials.
Okay, well, the way, you know, when you say case-by-case basis, that always throws me into the situation of, who's judging at that moment? You know, you know, in two years, someone else could be sitting in your seat, and they judge it a different way, so I just try to always make things as simple as possible, but by putting stuff like that in there, so that way, it makes it simpler all the way around, rather than sometimes that case-by-case, it's always judgment of whoever's judging that case at that moment. So that's why I always try to push for those little extras like that, so that way, it just makes it simple as possible. There is no judgment, because it's in the zone, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Braxton for his work on this. I am one of the councilpeople that was involved early on, and my understanding is, there were some issues in Highland Park, and then for me, with the Polquincy detours, people were turning on First Street or Third Street and going all, trying to get all the way to McVicker through neighborhoods, and it was a very, very bad situation. To clarify a couple points for folks, what Braxton explained to me was that rather than designing the routes themselves, but instead publishing the map, that the real action intent was to make sure that staff got alerted if there was a situation where trucks were pulling off and going through areas they didn't need to go through. We had one some time ago in North Topeka, because the trucks were used in Northwest, I want to say Clay. That's, that's been resolved, but the issue is that we've gone back and forth, and it turns out that even though we've designated what is a truck route and what's not, it will not be accommodated by Google or even the Waze overlay, so that if people get off, let's say they come across the Boulevard Bridge and they want to get to McVicker, their GPS is still going to tell them, the quickest way is to turn on First Street until we close it. But for instance, so putting up the signs on those places where we've realized people are getting directed where they shouldn't be, because we can't, maybe in time, we'll be able to solve the GPS issue. Then my concerns also were those similar to Councilman Kell. He's talking about a place in Way South. Deer Creek Traffic Way, for instance, where Reesers comes and goes to get on the interstate is not a marked one either, nor is going out on, way out of east on Twenty-first Street. And the answer I got was that that way, if they can check that map, they can choose the route that's most direct, but if it's what it takes to get from their company to the highway, it's going to be okay. Braxton, correct me if I'm wrong there, but I just wanted to raise the GPS issue especially, because sometimes it takes us without, in the community, to realize what's happening and help direct people in. Thank you, Mayor.
That is correct. Deer Creek is rated as a collector, that's why it's not shown on the map, but the drivers from Reesers absolutely have the right to get off at the highway, drive north on Deer Creek, and be able to go to the Reesers, either the truck facility, or the potato plant, or to even drive over to the new salad plant.
Okay. No further questions? Is there a motion to entertain?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Miller, second by Deputy Mayor. If you call the roll, please.
Okay, councilmembers Duncan?
Councilmembers Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And Dobler?
Yes.
All right. We have eight yes, the motion carries.
Motion carried. We'll move to action item L. Madam Clerk?
L is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Spencer Duncan on behalf of the citizens of Topeka urging all taxing entities, including the State of Kansas and City of Topeka, to keep mill levies at the lowest possible rates.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, if I could defer to Councilman Duncan on this item?
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to my colleagues for at least indulging me on this and considering it this evening. Sorry I'm not there in person. I'm out traveling across western Kansas, actually talking to other local elected officials and city staffs about some of the same issues we've been dealing with tonight. So apologies for not being there in person. I'm not going to take long on this. We've talked about it several times. I'm just going to quickly reiterate the three primary purposes for this and kind of what it does. The first is, it's just a public acknowledgement from this governing body that we hear the concerns of the citizens, we recognize them, and we're working towards solutions. As I said before, we do do that every year. These conversations are absolutely baked into our budget process. We have very extensive and deep conversations about way we can reduce various tax burdens, but not all those get heard by everybody. And I think sometimes people get frustrated just because they don't hear every conversation, and I understand that. But, you know, we are a city who hasn't raised the mill levy in 13 years. In the last several, we've decreased the mill levy. So we have a history of listening, and I think this is just one more acknowledgement of that effort. The second thing this does, it does not make a demand of anybody. It does not ask anybody to lower rates or do anything special with their rates. It asks them to just take the same considerations we do as we work this process, through this process. But more importantly, it reminds everybody, and sort of is our way to tell them, this isn't an us problem, and it's not a them problem. We can't solve this alone, and neither can that. There are eight taxing entities in this county as it relates to property tax, and we're only going to solve it if we work together. So really, this is just a call out there to, hey, we're here, we want to have the conversations, we are inviting everyone to the table, and let's see if we can't work together to see where we can locally find some solutions and also advocate at the state level for some much-needed solutions. And then the third thing it does do is it attempts to send a message to officials at the State of Kansas. I've said before, there's a little frustration in this portion baked into it also, because the truth is, there have been multiple state laws passed the last several years that relates to property taxes that local governments are required to follow. The state has not required itself to follow. And they have, the last several years, made demands of cities, including ours, to do certain things, yet they could take the same actions and also do not do as much. So this is a message to them that, hey, we're doing our part, and we're working on the problem. We also would like you to join the conversation and sort of hold yourself to the same standard that you expect us to hold ourselves to. So that's the purpose of this, why I wanted to put it forward as we worked through the budget process, and as we know, there's great conversations, particularly as it relates to property taxes in the community. So, thank you, Mayor, and that's kind of all I have to say at this point.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, even though that we understand that this is a resolution, right? It still, to me, is a very strong statement that Councilman Duncan is making, and I don't believe in any way, shape, or form that he takes this lightly, because of his day job, because of an elected official, because all of us understand where we're at right now. And I think that what we're going to have to do as part of this is, we're going to have to start talking, as we continue to move down the silos within the municipal government itself, it's going to behoove us to try to break down those silos too with the other taxing entities for these conversations that you're talking about, Councilman Duncan, that I think that we need to start having amongst each other. The other thing that I think is it sends a message, and I don't know how it will be received with the state legislature, because I think that citizens really need to understand what is trying to start happening at the legislature but is being sidetracked from happening at the, as a, at the legislature. So as the capital city trying to take the lead on something like this, I'm always thinking partnership, partnership, partnerships. You know, maybe we'll see that across the state, we'll see other municipalities start to take, if they have not already, similar resolutions forward. Because again, I understand people are frustrated. I understand that they want this continued increase of property taxes to stop, but by the same token, the buck does not just stop here at the city council. It stops everywhere else, and that is the state. And I really hope that we utilize very strongly in this next legislative session, our lobbyists, and also our relationship with the Shawnee County delegation, because we're going to need the help of legislators to help, legislators to help move this agenda forward that we're trying to move forward for the people, like, not for elected officials, for egos, for electability, for party, for whatever, for the people. And I think that we're losing sight that there is a lot of barriers that are happening at the state level that we need to work at breaking down for real change to happen when it comes to property tax envaluations, et cetera. Thank you.
Councilman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I will share, most people don't know it, I guess, but not all of us quite indulged Councilman Duncan on this. We have had some pretty spirited discussions. And that's, that's only because I wanted to cover all admonition to, and encouragement to our partners on all taxes, not just property tax. But give that, be that as it may, it has settled in, and I appreciate the amendments that he did make before this final submission. I'm probably out of order right now, but when the motion gets made, I want to offer a friendly amendment to change the language on lines 11, 20, and 26, which right now refers to homeowners only, as who we're worried about with this, to say homeowners and renters. My understanding is that Councilman Duncan is okay with that, because renters are just as affected by property tax increases as homeowners, and in fact, sometimes more, because once the landlord decides to raise the rent to cover the difference, maybe it's only $15 a month, but that's the time to raise the rent 40 or more. And we've seen some pretty hefty ones so far on the rentals, far more than many homeowners will ever see. So, thank you, Councilman Duncan, and I'll, if, if my thoughts are incorporated in the motion that you make, that's fine, otherwise I'll make the amendment afterward. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan?
Yeah, I have no issues with the change, and we can still have discussion after a motion is made. So I will go ahead and move to approve with the amended language as proposed by Councilmember Hiller.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
Second, my Councilman Miller. Okay. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
All right. Councilmembers Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
And Duncan?
Yes.
All right. We have nine yes, the motion carries.
Thank you for your work on that, Councilman Duncan. Appreciate it. Move on to now, non-action items. Madam Clerk?
A is discussion related to the City of Topeka 2025 operating budget.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Josh McAdarnay and our teams will take us through departmental overviews for the FY25 budget, proposed budget. This evening, you'll hear from the Departments of Public Works, Utilities, and Municipal Courts. Without turning over to you, Josh.
Thank you, City Manager. Like the City Manager said, just another Department Budget Presentation night, doing Public Works, Utilities, and Municipal Court. And then next week, we'll be, another round of that, but we'll just, I'll turn it over to Braxton to get the presentation started.
Assistant City Manager?
Thank you. So largely, I'm the face of Public Works, right? But I basically take a lot of credit for the hard work of 151 employees that are out there every day, making sure that our streets are safe to operate on, as well as to take care of all of our facilities. I've got three incredible deputies that are sitting in the back row. That includes Tony Trower, Deputy Direction, Deputy Director of Street Maintenance, Jason Tryon, who's Deputy Director of Administration, as well as Mark Schreiner, who is the City Engineer. And so we're functionally divided into three areas. Administration includes all of facilities, fleet, as well as our business services. And then we have engineering, which is responsible for maintaining all of our projects, which at any given time, we have about 200 projects in design, construction, or closeout. And then the street maintenance and traffic, transportation operations, which also includes forestry, that's Deputy Director Tony Trower. So I'm lucky to have three rock-solid deputies to run the department. Our overall Public Works budget for operations is $27 million. And the only general fund portion of that is $8.8 million, which is basically the, what's on the slide here. And so that would be forestry, and Public Works Administration, engineering would fall within those. So, capital project management. So we have 100 bridges, we have 180 signalized intersections, and we have 703 centerline miles of pavement, which equates to about 1,500 lane miles of pavement. We honestly don't have enough resources to be able to get everything done that we need to do, so we are challenged on a daily basis in terms of how do we make hard decisions in terms of what gets done and what doesn't get done. And we have gravitated towards a very data-driven approach. We have made some good headway. Back in 2016, our PCI was only 54. Our PCI, based on the 2022 inspection, is now up to 67. So we're getting there incrementally. I would like to have, I'd like to have a full cent, citywide half-cent sales tax, right? But we do, make do with what we have, and we make intelligent, data-driven decisions. The, just to highlight a few of our projects that are going on right now in 2024. Today, we did an overlay of the Curtis flyoff. We are in construction on River Road, will schedule to be done end of September. We've knocked out a slew of signals. We have substantial completion of signals at 17th and Fairlon, 6th and Golden, as well as the 10th Washburn Lane corridor. And then we are in construction on Topeka Boulevard, 21st to 29th. And we are making the award on the intersection of 21st, which will be full-depth reconstruction in concrete on that. And then in design, we have six from Rice to Golden. That's going to be milling overlay with some full-depth patching. Topeka Boulevard, we're in design reconstruction, 15th to 21st. And then we are in the concept phases of untuned, gauged to Harrison, and will be moving to design next year, after the council has determined what they want the scope of that to be. So, street maintenance, a couple of, a couple of highlights. We are hoping to be able to use the Safe Streets for All grant to be able to make a substantial impact in terms of upgrading flashers, signage, and pavement markings for all of our school crossings in the City of Topeka. We also are continually trying to update and upgrade our street maintenance equipment, including our large dump trucks that we need for snow fight, as well as motor graders. We actually, this past year, at one point, finally reached full staffing for street, first time that that's happened in, since I can remember being here. And that was attributable to the pay increase that the city council agreed to, to allow us to offer a competitive wage. It is a never-ending job in terms of patching potholes. We always have four crews out just about every single day, patching potholes. And during the summer, we try to make the most of it, because we can at least get hot mixed asphalt. The definition of a temporary repair is when using cold mixed asphalt and you're trying to patch a pothole on a concrete street. Right? We had five snow events last year. Kudos to Tony and his guys for basically moving us away from treated salt into a brine, much more environmentally friendly, as well as significant cost savings with us being able to make our own brine at nine cents a gallon versus buying it for a dollar a gallon. So the budget for street maintenance, $8.2 million, and that comes from a special motor fuel tax. So that's basically a fuel tax that's collected by the state that flows through to us, and that's what funds the street maintenance division. Moving over to fleet, so we have a total of 22 guys in fleet, or 22 FTEs. We currently only have one vacant position, which is definitely one of our accomplishments in terms of being at almost complete, having every position filled. Very talented, very hard-working crew. We have 1,000 pieces of equipment, and that includes about 570 vehicles, and then 437 pieces of miscellaneous equipment, from snow blower to trailers, you name it. If it's got an engine in it, these guys will figure out how to keep it, how to keep it We, our goal obviously is to have every vehicle ready at a moment's notice. That's not practical, because things break, right? So our, our performance measure is that we want 90% of our fleet to be operationally ready at any given point. And we're spread out over three different garages in terms of the fire, heavy duty, our heavy-duty equipment for construction, as well as the light-duty fleet shop, which we have discussed at great length in terms of, we need to move out of our existing facility. So moving over to facilities, we have 15 employees, and it is just never-ending in terms of trying to keep up with all of our facilities, some of which have, unfortunately have gone into disrepair. And so we're always chasing, chasing it, right? Few goals that we have for 2025. One is to complete the T-PAC HVAC renovation in City Hall as well. And there's not a city employee in City Hall that doesn't want to see that project come to a close quickly, as well as our friends over in T-PAC. But it's a $20 million project, or actually $18 million after we reduced the project budget. It's absolutely essential in terms of being able to provide a safe, comfortable environment. We did knock out the boiler conversion in City Hall, and then we have also done three roofs on Fire Station 4, 7, as well as the water distribution building. Our budget for facilities is right at $3.5 million. So, City Manager has challenged us to come up with reductions in the event that the council chooses not to use reserves, but instead to come up with reductions. As with the discussions of the public safety guys, I don't get there without eliminating positions, and that is a very difficult, a very difficult decision and a very difficult conversation. For the overall reduction in Public Works, to be able to achieve that 13%, I'm eliminating seven FTEs, and then also be cutting in half of what our ask is for the funding of consultant contracts. So the elimination of those positions, there's no question that we're going to impact service. It is going to reduce the number of projects that we can do, that we can manage in-house, which means that if we, if the desire is to continue to do those, then we have no choice but to engage consultants to help us deliver those services, because you all and the citizens deserve to have these projects going on constantly to be able to improve the condition of our infrastructure, particularly our roads. The other, the other impact on it is, we get myriad requests for studies in terms of people wanting additional traffic control. Under the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control, Under the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, we need to follow that. We need to determine whether or not a piece of traffic control is warranted, whether it's a signal, a stop sign, a yield sign, a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. We need to have that based on engineering study. And so the reduction in terms of what we're paying the consultants would definitely impact that, would have reduced the number of requests we can seriously look at, which would then delay the requests from the citizens in terms of when we'd be able to take a look at it. So if I had to go to Fleet, the only way I get a 13% reduction in Fleet is eliminating positions. So basically, I would eliminate four out of 22 positions, which is right at 20%. Again, that's going to impact my service in terms of, am I going to be able to have the vehicles ready when they're needed? And the answer is not every time. And then there are going to be some repairs that I can't do because of, that still have to be done that I'm going to have to contract with a third party to be able to do, to get the repair done. It's just the reality of it. There are a few things that we'd be able to, to cut that are non-personnel, but I don't get to 13% without eliminating positions. And then Facilities. Facilities, to only have to eliminate two positions, I'm going to have to make some cuts in terms of some of the other items that I have in contractual services and commodities that would allow me to reduce the amount of what I'm having to pay the external contractors to do for overhead door, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, which means that I'm going to get service requests, things are going to be broken, and I'm going to have to make decisions in terms of when and what I can do in terms of the repair. Then we're also, we've looked at a few services that I prefer not to cut, but to be able to hit the 13% reduction, I'm going to have to. And ones that we can cut, even though we don't want to, would be pest control, landscaping, as well as some just general inspections. So with that, I've covered a lot in a very short period of time. I will gladly stand for questions on any of my presentation.
Mayor, before we get to questions, if I could just share, again, I want to reiterate that for FY '25, the proposed budget is balanced. These are understanding where we are sitting for forecasting FY '26 and FY '27. These are things that we would consider in future years if, if needed. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
I know there's, thank you, Mayor. I know there's been some push and pull on, you know, talking 2025 versus 2026 and 2027. I personally think it's a good move because I think we have to be prepared, right? But I do have questions. Some of these, I'm not going to ask all at once. Some of these are my own questions, some from people I have gotten that have called me on the phone, emails, at NIA meetings. But just a quick questions, like, in the cuts that we're looking at, we're seeing a lot of slashing of FTE positions. And I'm asking, just for clarity, were directives kind of given, like, where to start making the cuts first? Because I guess my question is, there's a lot of overtime. And were there ever considerations of overtime cuts being made?
Deputy Mayor, so when we first started the budget process, when we started looking at the FY '25 budget, I asked for the departments to look at a 3% to 5% reduction. That was before I realized that we were looking at about a $15 million deficit. So after the $15 million deficit was identified, we went through a number of, number of iterations, primarily using, again, one-time reserves to fill the majority of our deficit. As I mentioned in our last budget briefing, for me, I wanted us to actually have the time to be able to evaluate where we can make these cuts. I will tell you, for the most part, everyone, most departments are adhering to their FY '24 budgets with regards to overtime. In full transparency, we are running over, in our Police Department, overtime for the fact that we have so many vacancies. But there's an offset where you have vacancies. You also have funding to actually pay for that overtime. So, so yeah, so we monitor things like overtime as we go through the budget process.
Okay. So it says here eliminate seven FTEs. So those FTE positions are those specifically engineering positions that you're marking as possibility of reduction?
So I'd really prefer not to specifically talk about which positions until we get to the point where I'm told that I have to make the 13% and then I have to have those conversations with staff before we have, have the conversation. But it is, it is a mixed bag across the entire department.
And so, and this is just to try to wrap my mind around things. Like, right now, how many engineers do we have?
So I have four vacant engineer positions, and I have four filled engineer positions, one of which is a part-time engineer.
And because of that is why we have, we're spending the amount that we are on consulting is to fill, is to fill that gap. And so when you say eliminating engineering positions increases the reliance on consultants or completing projects and reduce level of service, a number of projects managed in-house. So there's a possibility. I mean, that just makes it sound to me, to the untrained ear, that, you know, you have four filled positions already, but there's, and you have four vacant. And we're looking at '26, '27. And it sounds to me, engineering position, are there additional positions that are outside of that official engineer, FTE, you know, that act as an engineer position category? I'm trying to figure out eliminating engineering positions when, at this point, we only have four filled. And I know we're talking '26, '27, so bear with me here. We only have four filled, we have four vacant. But then eliminating engineering positions, I'm trying to wrap my mind around what engineering positions actually entails in your verbiage, in your lingo.
So engineer position, in engineering, the positions would include PEs, professional engineer, as well as they would include engineering tech positions. So I do have some engineering techs that are very good at what they do and their experience, that I can have them manage a more simple program. For example, sidewalk, curb and gutter. You don't have to be a PE to be able to, to effectively manage that.
How many do you have of those?
I believe it's four or five engineering techs, approximately.
And are you short right now, have some vacancies on that?
And the engineering techs, no. And the positions, again, the positions, I don't want to get into specific detail because I don't want people sitting at home saying, he's going to eliminate my position, right? But they are across the board. Now, the challenge is we're $15 million short on the general fund. So if I am told that I have to achieve that cut and I have to eliminate engineering positions, then that means that I'm going to have to rely on consultants that are managing projects that are bundled out of citywide half-cent sales tax. So that would be the funding source to pay those.
And this may be a naive question, but I'm going to put it out there anyway. So instead of, when looking at possible cuts, trimming down these budgets, and we're seeing, you know, again, FTEs here, is there no way to actually try to cut down the cost on projects rather than eliminating positions? Anybody?
Deputy Mayor, I think that my preference would be that, and I've worked with, we've talked with our Human Resources Department, as well as our Utilities Group, who is also struggling to hire engineers. In this particular instance, my preference would be that we become more aggressive in hiring of our in-house positions so that way, they're less expensive than us paying consultants. So my preference would be that we hire and we fill those vacancies. And then you'll see the, you'll see the reduction on the cost of consultants that we're spending, so, or that we're spending on consultants. So we've had those discussions, I mean, as late as last week. And I've asked the team to become more aggressive on being able to hire EITs or engineers, even those from outside of the great state of Kansas. And so we are, we're going to be aggressive on that. I'd rather cut the funding of the consultants than cut the FTEs.
Right. And so that makes sense to me. But I guess my, my larger question is, is that, has there not been consideration? I mean, taking the whole thing about, you know, FTEs off the, off the table, has there not been consideration when looking at the budget cuts about the cost of some projects? Or is that sacred ground and you don't go in and you don't move in on those, especially once they're in the CIP?
Even if we made the projects less expensive, we would still have to pay engineers the same to design it. I mean, because you reduce the scope, it doesn't reduce the, the cost of design.
Got it.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you, Mayor.
Before you go further, I want to make sure too that the governing body understands that even though these are discussions that we're talking about, but what ifs, if we make these different, different cuts. Currently, and ongoing, and you've done it in the past, you've been working along with your staff to make cuts already so that you're really very much aware of the need to be frugal with our, our resources, our available funds and our staff. So it's, I think, important for us to let the public know that we're not just focusing on what might happen in the future. We're, day by day, doing what we can to address the issues that might come up in '25, '26, and '27. Day by day, we're doing that as a regular way of doing business within your department.
That is correct, sir. We're always looking for, we're always looking for efficiencies.
City Manager?
And outside money. We're always trying to look for outside money as well.
Look for outside money, yeah. Any other questions for Assistant Karen? Way out there in space, yeah.
I think Spencer had his hand up before I did, so however you want to go.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. I'll go. I think the City Manager, I appreciate the comments about the outside contracts and the focus on hiring. I personally am someone who has been very vocal. I think $15 million is way too much to leave a gap. I'm concerned about the proposals about bonding things that were supposed to be done in cash. That's, I think, way too short-sighted for us long-term, especially if the economy is leveling. So for what that's worth, I've been asking a lot of questions. I really appreciate the staff getting back with me. I have two to just double-check this evening. One of the proposals in there is to add another $600,000 to the budget for consulting services in 2025. And the discussion has been that that's to knock out some projects. My question is, is that addition of $600,000 expected to be a one-time-only, one-year addition? Or is that something that would be a multi-year commitment?
So I can speak to that issue. The, the $600,000 was not pulled out of thin air. In 2023, we spent a total of $660,000 on traffic engineering consulting services. That approximately, half of that, I'm sorry, $490,000 of that was for studies and other things related to reviews of streets. For example, the California, the Club Car Wash on California. We had to engage a consultant to do a study of that, to look at what would be a possible way of traffic, traffic safety. We've had numerous requests to come in from council members, NIA's, for traffic safety, for traffic calming. So we literally spent $490,000 in 2023 on those, on those items. We have 43 active cases right now. We've closed out 49. So I mean, these, this is, this is non-stop. In addition to that, we also have development review that needs to go on. And that is, anyone coming in with a site plan, a plat, a building permit, we have to do a review, a traffic review to make sure that it's complying with our regulations as well as it's not going to be a problem. So that's where the $600,000 came from. That is for traffic engineering. Now, if and when I'm able to hire a traffic engineer, then I would expect those services to go down dramatically. But I need a traffic engineer and I need a traffic tech. So the answer is, until I get a traffic engineer and traffic tech, this would be something that I would budget on a, on an annual, on an annual basis. Once I get those, then I would be able to reduce that amount because they're not, traffic engineer and traffic tech are not going to be able to do everything without having some assistance. So hopefully, that helps to explain where we came from on the $600,000, what exactly it is, which is all related to traffic engineering services in two different types, and it's not just project management.
Thank you for that. In the discussion, and I've been part of some of those discussions about looking at some ways to hire in a team. We've not been successful in hiring people one at a time. But hiring a team in, in a variety of ways could work. Either way, is there any reason why that hiring initiative can't start now with a goal of getting folks in, onboard by 2025?
Councilmember Hiller, as I, as I mentioned a little earlier, we're already in those discussions. So yes, our, our plan is to be very aggressive in the hiring of our engineers. In the event that we are successful in doing so, then we shouldn't see those expenditures next year. And so it'll be budgeted in the event that we're not able to get there. But if we are able to get there, then we shouldn't make those expenditures, ma'am.
Thank you so much. I have one more question, and that, regarding facilities, there was a, a suggestion that, well, regarding external contracts to do things like plumbing, electrical, and HVAC. I know, and, and I think also landscaping. I know that we used to do the landscaping ourselves in-house. Do we not have enough work for a full-time equivalent or a half-time equivalent employee versus contracting out? Or have we found that that's cheaper in the long run? Just if we could address those expenses for a moment?
So two things. First and foremost, in Facilities, I have 15 FTEs. I currently have four vacancies. So I've, I've got a lot of work to do and a few people. The slide that we had was basically, if I needed to achieve 13% cuts, what would I do? So that would be eliminate a couple of FTEs, but would also eliminate some third-party services. Right now, I, my staff are overworked with what they have. They cannot also do the, the Facilities work in terms of the landscaping and those sorts of things. But I, you know, if given the opportunity, instead of cutting positions, if you told me that I can increase my budget by 13% by adding additional positions, I would, that would be a task I would relish, coming to you and say, these are the additional positions, and this is what we can do in terms of increasing our service level.
Thanks. I was just looking, once again, like with that $600,000, as to whether hiring in-house, generally, if you really have steady FTE work or steady even part-time work, can be more cost-effective. So just checking. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question, a comment. My question was actually asked and answered. I had a question about the consultants also. So I'm just going to make my comment. I, I feel like we got some new information this evening to some degree. Has the City Manager told us that he did ask departments to look at some decreases in their budgets? But at the end of the day, we decided to just lean into reserves and take a look moving forward to next year. First of all, using reserves, while this is a balanced budget, let's be clear, when you have to deep dig that deep into your reserves, you're not really balancing your budget. All right? I get that this is a technically balanced budget, but it's not really. And I, my frustration still stands. If I misheard, and our departments have made cuts to this budget for '25, not '26, we need to see those. The public needs to see those so they have an understanding that this budget we're proposing that is dipping into reserves. that is dipping into reserves, that is asking for a mill levy increase, was what we had to do after we made a few tough decisions first. But I'm not hearing that tonight. And I'm going to assume that maybe that information exists until I hear otherwise, but I would like if we've made some cuts throughout departments to see where those were made and what those were, so we can have that information and a better understanding. Because my concern still stands. We are watching the hole in the boat, fill up the boat, waiting to essentially say, well, we're going to wait till it sinks, and then we'll pull it up and figure it out. And our 13% cuts, if those are accurate, they're coming, no matter what we're doing. If, if we don't do something now, unless they're based on the hope and dream that you get six votes, and then 51% of the public to vote for a sales tax increase. Right? So I'm concerned that we're not making some choices now to, to look towards the future just a little bit. Not asking for 13%, I'm not even asking for 5%. But some areas where we can make some hard decisions today to defer what you are essentially proposing is, is not a good look in 2026. And as of today, no assurances that we have additional revenue coming in to fill those 13% cuts. So I just want to put that out there. I'm happy, as the City Manager said to me last week, to make amendments, but I have learned, historically, staff really likes to make some of their own suggestions before our selected folks come in with what we think are great ideas. But I'm going to do that, and I'm not going to be drastic, and I'm going to try to be very scalpel-like, but I, I just want everyone to understand my concerns as we continue to have these conversations over the next several weeks. And if we can find some areas where some decisions can be made to reduce that 13% today, I think that is a more prudent path than, than what we're kind of on now. So thank you, Mayor.
Josh?
Councilman Duck and Josh here. We do have a list of cuts that we're hoping to get out in a supplement that were cut before the initial budget was presented to you, so we will get that out to the council for the next council meeting.
And also to, to that point, one of the things that I have shared with a few of you, and I've definitely shared with Josh, is that I want us, as we complete our future budget books, that there's going to be specific sections that say, these are the, these are the enhancements that we, that are included in this, these are the reductions that were included in this budget, these are the fee adjustments, so that it's specifically called out in, in sections of, of the document. I'll tell you that one of the things, it didn't come up last week when we were discussing the org chart, but overall, I know that we, we shaved out about $137,000 in personnel costs from the general fund and positions. So, so those are some of the things that we will make more apparent here in the coming days.
Thank you. No further questions on that presentation. You want to move forward for utilities? Thank you, Assistant City Manager.
Director Davis will be doing utilities.
Good evening. I, thank you, Josh. I'll probably go a little bit slower, just because we're presenting a lot of information. But tonight, I'd like to walk through the utilities $110 million budget. That's, $110 million represents water, wastewater, and stormwater, and we're going to break those down by individual utilities as we discuss those operating budgets. So we're going to start with our water utility, which supports 122 FTEs. So with those FTEs, we're ensuring compliance with all of our clean water regulations. As you can see on the screen, that is comprised of our distribution, our plant operations and maintenance teams, customer service, lots of different units there that make up those 122 FTEs. And we're serving over 56,000 retail customers. Our proposed operating budget is $56.5 million, broken down on this slide. That represents an overall 7.5% increase from 2024 budget. That seven and a half percent increase is attributed to 10% increase in materials and supplies, overall commodities. It also encompasses 7% personnel cost increase and $1.8 million in debt service. So those are some big numbers there. However, we've offset these increases through transfer of $5.78 million in cash to fund our CIP, so that we're saving money in financing costs to help make up that overage. Next slide. Thank you. This information breaks down $1.3 billion worth of assets for the water system. We're treating and distributing over eight billion, nearly eight billion gallons of water, and assisting more than 100,000 customers through our call center. We've exchanged, and we'll talk about that a little bit more here in a minute, 1,400 meters to date, and then replaced nearly 10,000 linear feet of water mains. We do have some goals of continuing to meet and exceed our KDH requirements for safe, clean drinking water. We want to complete our meter exchange program in 2025 and increase customer communication through electronic methods with our new systems that we're incorporating. And we really want to develop some specialized training programs to help build up our workforce. Next slide. This slide highlights, just like our public works partners, we, we normally talk about our major projects in detail during our CIP process, but here we've highlighted several projects that we have completed or are on track for completing in 2024, including several water main replacement and rehab projects, and then some major projects that we have planned for 2025. Okay, so I want to emphasize that our proposed operating budget is fully supported by our water rates. However, we, as our peers did, went through this exercise, and, and we, again, are always looking at ways that we can become more efficient and provide better customer service using the resources that we have at hand. We are constantly having to consider different ways of getting to that end result with a little fewer resources every time we go through a rate increase, and we have those discussions with you all, and we're trying to address a longstanding backlog of maintenance in our, for our assets and our infrastructure. So we do that at the rate discussion, we do that in our CIP, and now we're doing that through our operating budget and then this exercise. So if we were to look at a 13% reduction, these are some of the proposed cuts that we would consider. First, we would look at not filling our 15 FTEs in this water utility. That, I think that many of you have seen an impact to some of the service levels that we have, where we do have some vacancies. One of our biggest vacancies, vacancy groups is our distribution team. There's six vacancies in that unit, but that number doesn't represent the amount of experience that we have lost. So as we have a very young group, we don't have a lot of experienced foremen and leadmen running these teams, and that is absolutely attributing to some of the responses that you may have seen out in the field. So we are trying to address those through a number of different methods, but sometimes bodies aren't the ultimate solution, because it takes them a while to become what we really need to be able to be the most effective. So we cannot fill vacancies, but that is absolutely going to have an impact on our service levels. Next, we would really take a hard look at how, what are other ways we can reduce overtime? We've already started a lot of that, where we may have a water main break that comes in at night, but we think we can hold off until the next day. If there's a holiday or a weekend, where we used to see a lot of regularly scheduled work on those days, we are pushing that as much as we can to regular workdays to impact those overtime numbers and, and some of the costs associated with doing that work. That can sometimes be an inconvenience to our businesses. Some really important customers that need to stay open during certain hours, we really try to accommodate them as best as possible, but that can add to our overtime costs. So we would take a look at what this number represents, this reduced overtime budget of $351,000, that represents a 50% cut. So that's what we would strive to do in our current overtime budget. We would look at additional service cuts, so fleet, equipment purchases. You see up on the screen, potential of closing our customer service center here at the Holiday Building. That is, the people that use that are very thankful and appreciative of that service. However, we do have some other methods that they could potentially use to pay their bills and get assistance. So that would be one consideration that we would make. And then, of course, finally, we would look at reducing FTEs. As Braxton said, you can't hit some of these big numbers like $7 million without reducing FTEs. So we have proposed that as well, but the biggest impact you see up on the screen is reduction or elimination of capital programs. So if we really looked at reducing the amount that we're funding those capital programs, that's $3.8 million. However, that's just extending the problem that we're currently combating of deferred maintenance and addressing that aging infrastructure. So you guys, many of you are familiar with us saying, we really would love to get to the industry standard of replacing water lines on a 100-year replacement cycle, and with the last rate increase, we were able to get closer to that by hitting 150-year replacement cycle. But if we were to reduce or eliminate our capital programs, it would push us out to more than a 200-year replacement cycle. So that would equate to more water main breaks, more overtime. We also are using as many resources as we can to address those water main breaks through the use of contractors. We're, we're trying to sharpen our pencil and see what we can do with some of these contracts to make sure that we're using our funds as expeditiously as possible there. But this would all result in a negative impact to the level of customer service that we can provide our constituents. Okay, so buzzing through these, and then we'll open it up for questions at the end. We're moving to stormwater. So our stormwater utility represents 25 FTEs, who ensure compliance with our state and federal regulations governing water quality and quantity. Our proposed budget of $12.7 million represents an overall decrease of nearly $1 million from our 2024 operating budget, despite increasing personnel costs to about 5% and increases to debt service costs. So while we have seen some increases, we have offset that to be able to reduce our overall budget to almost $1 million. Again, that's heavily impacted by our ability, how we utilize our cash transfers. So we're still paying $3.4 million to ongoing debt service with those cash transfers through this proposed budget. Next slide. Oh, yeah. Here we have an overview of our nearly $1 billion in stormwater assets. So that includes inlets, pipes, ditches, also our levee system. We continue to maintain the required levee maintenance and comply with all of our levee inspection requirements, as well as some of our performance metrics, such as inspecting culverts and outfalls, how many stormwater lines we are cleaning annually, how many inlets we are cleaning annually, et cetera. This slide, again, highlights our 2024 stormwater projects and some of our 2025 major projects that we have been planning, and some of those have begun. Many of you know that we have ongoing challenges with changing weather patterns and constant development and redevelopment of the city that really impacts stormwater and how it can impact our neighborhoods and residences. So the conveyance, the stormwater conveyance program and the drainage correction programs are really key to us being able to help address flooding streets, neighbors who have a buildup of stormwater in their backyards, et cetera. Without those programs, we would really struggle to try to address some of those bigger issues. So again, the stormwater budget is, that we have proposed, is fully funded by our user rates, our utility rates that are in place. However, if we were to seek this 13% reduction, we would, again, take a very similar approach of not filling some of our vacant positions. We would look at what kind of fleet and equipment purchases we can delay or eliminate altogether. That's going to end up costing us in the long run, but we have done that in the past. Overtime budgets, we would really strive to reduce those even more, although with stormwater, you can see that overtime budget of 25%, $25,000 represents 50%. So that's $50,000 overall. It's not a huge overtime budget there. All the assistance that utilities provides for homeless camp abatements, that comes out of our stormwater utility to the tune of $150,000 currently. So we would see an impact there, and then again, reduction or elimination of additional capital programs and potential staff reduction of four FTEs. That would obviously, again, have a negative impact on our level of customer service that we're providing. We would see a 10% reduction in that conveyance and the drainage correction programs. We could move that needle as well, so we could adjust there. What, what kind of impact do we want to have, and, and what level of service does that allow us or doesn't allow us to provide to our customers? But those are some of the potential hits that we would see. And then, of course, we do face the potential to go out of compliance somewhere. Some of the efforts that we are required to do through our permits include continuing education. That is something that I think many of us might see as an additional good feeling line item, but that is absolutely something that's required of us through our regulations. So we would really not want to eliminate some of those things that would impact our ability to maintain compliance. If we did fail to maintain compliance, we could see different consent orders and penalties associated with non-compliance. So that's what we are trying to avoid here. Okay, wastewater. Our wastewater utility, last but not least, supports the effort of 75 FTEs who manage and treat more than five billion gallons of wastewater annually. Our 2025 proposed budget represents a 10.4% decrease from our 24 operating budget. So that's a really good decrease. I think we feel really happy that we're able to see a 10% reduction in operating budget and still try to meet and exceed as, as many of our regulatory compliance issues and customer service levels that we want to provide our customers. We are able to see this 10.4% decrease despite personnel increases of 9% and major increases to our SCADA operations budget, which is traditionally housed in our capital improvement budget, but we have now moved that over to our operating budget. This includes $5 million worth of cash transfer to our capital projects. Our wastewater utility, are these our goals? Yep. We have accomplished cleaning and inspection of more than 560,000 linear feet of sewer main, and we saw a 19% reduction in odor complaints compared to 2023. So we're happy about that, even though our odor control program is one of those that, because it's chemically based, it can increase, and it has seen continued increases, especially after COVID, we, we really saw a big spike in those. So we, we do have some upcoming projects set to address that, to try to reduce our operating budget, but it's going to be a while before we see the fruits of, of our labors there. Wastewater projects, you see, we kind of added the assets on this slide, $1.3 billion worth of wastewater assets that we support through our operating budget and our CIP budget or programs as well. So you see some of our pump station and plant projects that we have completed and are looking to, to complete in 2025. Those, any improvements that we can make to our plants and pump stations helps us be more efficient operationally. more efficient operationally. So for the third time, I will remind you that these operating funds are set through our rates, and we do have rates that support our proposed budgets. However, a 13% reduction for wastewater would be $5.3 million. We would again look at staff reductions, not filling those vacant FTEs first. What can we do to eliminate purchases of equipment and fleet? That isn't going to tie our hands too much. And how can we really impact that overtime budget? What can we do with chemicals and other commodities that we can see now without having a major impact to our customer service? But if we didn't have any other options, you see some of our proposals up here, including, again, a reduction or elimination of capital programs to the tune of $3.4 million. We really do have to be careful about compliance efforts here on the wastewater side. We don't want to see consent orders and fines or penalties for noncompliance. More so, it's an image issue that we really don't want to see impacting our community. That's kind of fast and furious through our utilities operating budget, but we'll stand for questions.
Councilman Duncan?
So first of all, Sylvia, thank you for the work you guys did on 21st. As I said last week, there was a no-win situation. The hole was there, the work needed done, and I know it was frustrating to people, but you guys got in there, and you got it open by Saturday, the Monday deadline. So I know everybody was happy about that.
That's a good partnership with Public Works, yes.
I don't care who answers this question. My confusion here is, if this departments are primarily self-funded, especially through the rate increases that we put on citizens for the next five years, and a small percentage, if I don't know what that is, that'd be good number, no, comes from our, why would these departments have to do 13% reductions? If they're not part of the overall, if they're already self-funded and the projections with the rate increases we've done are supposed to provide the revenue over the next five years for all these projects?
Councilman Duncan, I think that Sylvia mentioned that she didn't, we don't have to in our utilities department, but just to do the exercise is why we did it.
I understand that, but I think it's important to remind the citizens that one of the reasons we undertook the rate evaluation and increased those rates was so that we could provide fully funded services, so that we would be in compliance. And I think this messaging contradicts that a little bit, because I want the citizens to know that those funds are safe, and we had to make tough decisions then, and moving forward, those projects are going to get fucked. So I just want to put that out there so that there's no misconception from people as they look at those rates that have gone up this past year. Thank you.
Councilman, if I could, understood and heard loud and clearly. I will tell you, though, that part of this exercise is identified, and I think I share with a number of the council, that one of the first things I looked at was vacancies, particularly in this fund. If we are able to reduce or eliminate positions that have been vacant for three, four, or five years, those funds could actually be reprogrammed towards additional capital work. So I don't think that this is a wasted exercise. I think that it is something that every year we should be doing. And if we identify opportunities, such as the one I just mentioned, that we would recommend and propose something along those lines. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
This is pretty basic question. What is the projected annual revenue for this readiness-to-serve charge that citizens are very upset about that they're paying?
Nicole, off the top of your head, what did we say?
Hi, it's just over, we pulled over.
Half a million?
Yeah.
In each one. Half a million in wastewater, half a million in water.
Okay, that's, okay. And just for clarification as well, the readiness to serve, does that also include including multifamily dwellings in all businesses?
Yes.
Buildings, et cetera?
Yes.
Because, okay. Thank you.
That's all I got.
Councilwoman Kell?
By doing the Citizens Academy with Public Works and Utilities, they, I can tell you from personal experience from watching, they look at ways of cutting the budget. They look at cost savings, they look at reusing things that they can reuse, and it was very refreshing to see that. One thing also was, you know, what they can bring in-house is going to save us money. And yes, it may cost more right up front, but over a 10-year span, we're saving money. So I think both of these departments do a very good job of looking at what they have in front of them and trying to make the best of it and trying to stretch it as far as they can.
Thank you. Further comment? Councilwoman Hitter?
Thank you, Mayor. This may not be the right time to get an answer to this question, but I'm pleased that Deputy Mayor brought up the readiness-to-serve charge. In general, my recollection was that when we approved the rates, that the discussion of, that this readiness-to-serve, which was new, was basically just a renaming of the configuration of the elements that went into the, to the rate schedule. I know that there's been a lot of feedback now that it's actually been implemented, but could I ask now whether there's any expectation of adjusting those rates or renaming it back to base charge or something like that?
Yes, so we've spent a lot of time and energy looking at some alternatives that we can do to help address the complaints that we have heard from those that are impacted now on readiness-to-serve versus, I guess, trying to figure out the best way to say this. So the readiness-to-serve charge is a renaming of our base charge. And for 98% of those 56,000 customers, 98% of them have paid the base charge and continue to pay the base charge that is now called readiness-to-serve. So those people that have been impacted by now in 2024 versus 2023 represent 2% or less of our customer base. And so as we are looking at potential changes to that, we have been toying with, when is the best time to present some options to you all to consider? And we have kind of tabled that for the moment while we look at these budgets. We got through our CIP budget, and now we're doing operating budget. And then I think that's the best time to present, here's where we're at with readiness-to-serve, here's what those numbers look like, and how many people are impacted, and here are some additional things we could do to consider addressing that ordinance and those changes so that you all can have that to consider.
Thank you.
Anything further?
I would add that, to the City Manager's point, we have some positions that have been open for a very long time. We have addressed the functions of those positions by utilizing temporary employees or part-time employees to help fill that gap. So that is something we always toy with annually. Do we really need this position, or do we not? And the services, we desperately need. We have some people holding two or three hats as they're trying to help us meet the needs of you all and our customers. And ideally, we would love to see a fully staffed utilities department, and we are working very heavily with the City Manager on those engineer positions, to be specific. And NHR has continued to be a resource for us to aid in some of our other positions that look to be revolving doors. And that's why we've included in our operating budget some goals and some dollars to focus on some training programs, because we see people coming in the door in a couple of these units in utilities, but they're not staying for long. And we really want to be able to get them in and train them so that they feel comfortable doing the jobs that we're asking them to do. And we're also constantly looking at the salaries of not just our union employees, but our management employees as well, to see that we're being competitive, and what are some other things we can do to continue to build that culture and retain our good employees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Councilwoman Kell?
If you could, this address the City Manager. On these two departments, I think that's pretty much a heavy overtime load when it comes to our, the hours spent in overtime between those two departments. Almost, I'd like to see maybe the reverse of this, of how much this will impact us when it comes to something like overtime in the long run by eliminating roughly between the two departments 66.5 positions, and how much more overtime will actually be caused by that, which will in essence cost us more in the long run by eliminating so many positions. I'm not against eliminating redundant positions or positions that we can realign, but to me, eliminate 66 positions on a, departments that already have a lot of overtime, we're going to create that much more overtime. And where the plan is to maybe not do the overtime on the weekends and holidays, it's going to create those, max our overtime situations.
Councilman, I think that's a good question. I think it's a good exercise to undertake. I will tell you, though, that I think part of the discussion also needs to include, what is our expected service level? I mean, it could be, it could be that we have to fill 66, however, whatever the number was that you mentioned as far as through overtime. But I mean, some of these, I mean, you're seeing some of the potential results or outcomes by cutting these positions. And maybe, maybe a pothole doesn't get filled in five days or less, whatever our service level agreement is, maybe as we move it to seven, and that gives us additional flexibility. I mean, these are all things I mentioned in our overview that I do intend to, I do want to have a retreat with the council, either towards the end of this year or beginning of next year, to level set, where is it that we want to be? Because it could be, like I said, instead of filling a pothole in three days, we can do it in five, or we can do it in seven, and we don't have to cut overtime, or we don't have to cut a position. So I want us to level set, really, really study and level set the service levels that we want, and take that and use that to craft the next budget. So we can absolutely do the exercise of, you know, if we eliminate, you know, X number of positions, how much more overtime it may cost. But then the other part is, if you want to maintain the same level of service, I mean, that's one exercise, but if we want to adjust that, understanding what we're looking at, that's definitely part of the discussion that we need to have as well.
I just know, one of the things that's come up a lot in the three years I've been here is, we've worked really hard to take that deferred maintenance aspect and really work on those projects to get those kind of back up in line. And I just want it to be where we start falling back, you know, on our road maintenance and our PCI, and what we're spending on keeping our buildings upkeep and all those type of things. Because if we're moving forward, let's at least, to me, maintain that or keep on moving forward, but if we're moving backwards, we're heading in a completely wrong direction that in the long run is going to cost us more money. And to me, it looks like we need to be more thought-provoking on things that, yes, may cost us more money right now, but what's going to save us, you know, in the long run? You know, I've had a few people bring up to me, why don't we have our own asphalt plant? And Omaha is, you know, starting to do theirs, and they're talking about how they're progressing their roads, because once the asphalt plant's shut down in Topeka, we're done. But then you have this in Omaha where they're not only using it for Omaha, but they're using it for, they're renting it out to the surrounding areas to help pay for it. So it's one of those things of, you know, I think if we can look at things like that also, that could help us out in the long run. And look at also what the negatives, in this 13%, where are the negatives towards the budget? Because if we're going to eliminate positions, we're going to pay time and a half, two times for those hours that people are working overtime, are we really saving anything?
I will just say that you have very good thoughts, and I will say that as many things that we can do in-house that are cost-effective for us, we're definitely open to discussing those options. Thank you.
All right, Your Honor?
Ready to go?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Good afternoon, good evening, Governor Body Mayor, Deputy Mayor.
Been here a long time.
It's been a good day. We're going to present on the municipal court budget today. I'm Judge Karan Thadani. I've been with the city about eight years, started as a prosecutor. I've been the administrative judge for the court since approximately July of 2020. So service overview, what do we do? We are a court of limited jurisdiction. We do misdemeanors, traffic tickets, dangerous dog cases, DUIs. Now we do domestic battery cases. Our mission is to fairly and promptly adjudicate all cases and enforce judgments rendered. I realize the time is 8:25, so we'll make this quick. The court's department is broken down into three divisions. We have probation, we have the judicial division, which is myself and Judge LeBlanc, and then we have the court administrator. Like Mr. Copley said, we are the faces of our departments, but without our troops, we're pretty much nothing. So Shuri Holly is my court administrator, Claudia Fisher is my probation supervisor, and then who do I leave out? And then Shuri Holly is my court administrator, and Judge Valerie LeBlanc is my associate judge. And she came up to us about a year and a half ago from Fort Scott. Some of our goals for next year, you know, as a court, we deal with a lot of staffing issues. It's a hard job. We do a lot of QC-ing, we deal with the public a lot, the phone rings a lot, emails, motions come in a lot, and we have a lot of walk-in traffic. So fully staff our division, hire FTEs, that's a big one for us. The court currently is located in T-PAC on a temporary basis. This is the third time we've done that in about three to four years, and it would be really hard for me to not give credit when I'm up here to staff, because doing that is not easy, whether it's IT helping, facilities helping, and then the clerks in general, working out of two offices in T-PAC. It's hard on them. But nonetheless, for the last month and a half, business as usual. The last two times we moved, the business has been as usual as well. So very proud of staff to be able to do that. Some of our accomplishments, it's important to know, the court is probably one of the four to five biggest in the state. On a monthly basis, we probably have 10,000 active cases, and out of those, we probably dispose of about 1,000 a month. This year, we were able to secure a grant award with the help of the prosecution department, legal department, and of course, our grant writer, that's allowed us to really help with the domestic violence cases. It's allowed us to provide bus passes, allowed us to provide batterer's intervention program at no cost to the defendant. So there's a lot of good stuff coming out of that. And I believe there may be two prosecutors in training now because of this grant, so good stuff. Property maintenance, the LLC ordinance was new. We've used that quite a bit. When I ran these numbers at the end of July, we had done approximately 31 cases that we found judgment on. I think we ran the numbers, and I got them to you by email on Friday. The total amount of judgments this year was, I think, over, close to $100,000. Domestic violence, we started that last year, and I'll be frank with the body, I mean, it's changed the court, it's changed the prosecution department, it's changed the probation department considerably. The cases we deal with are a lot high-risk. We have to review a lot more documentation, whether it comes from the county level or the lethality assessments. We've had to create a bond supervision program. We've created a domestic violence docket. The prosecutor's offices had to get a DV coordinator to help with these cases. And at the end of the day, you've seen the jail costs have gone up. What used to be about $80,000 a month is now closer to $100,000 a month. I think a lot of that is domestic violence-related. I think the other portion of it is mental health-related, repeat offenders, competency issues. I think all that goes hand in hand. This year, we also helped Kansas Legal Services with DL clinics, four of them. Well, three we've done, we're doing a fourth one next month. We've provided a court administrator at their clinics, and then we've done follow-up dockets to assist these people with suspended licenses. To date, through those clinics, I don't know, if I had to guess, we're probably $40,000 to $50,000 in fees we've been able to waive lawfully. So that's a good thing to know. Budget-wise, it's pretty simple. We know what we need to run. The majority of it is personnel, like everybody else. And so, just like the other departments, you know, 13% were And so just like the other departments, you know, 13% were to be applied, we were given the mission to do this, a majority of it would go to personnel. I mean, we're talking probably five FTEs, which would equal 300,000. Right now, I have five vacancies, three in the court and two in probation. So be a removal, removal of some staff. Impact, higher caseload for probation officers with bond supervision and just regular supervision of offenders in the community. They're doing about 35 to 40 cases right now. If we were to cut an officer, there, there would be some impact. Case intake and docketing would take longer. So just as background, every ticket, every private complaint that comes to the court right now has to be inputted manually by a clerk. That takes time. Moreover, every document, every journal entry that we provide a defendant is QCed because we can't make mistakes on these things. You miss a DOB, you don't recall a warrant that's supposed to be recalled, we're talking about a person's liberty in jeopardy. So those are things we take important. The QC process at the court is very intense and, and people get burned out pretty quickly. Right now, we run court Monday through Friday. Friday, we close the doors at 1 o'clock, so staff can have some in-service time. We can do training and they can get caught up on their docket work. If we were to cut FTEs, there will be a possibility I'd have to talk to Mr. City Manager about maybe not doing court on Friday so we could have staff to do all the inputting on that day. Slower processing of payments to restitution on victims. And then, just like I've said before, clerks are overworked as it is. It's high stress, a lot of contact with the public. Some of it pleasant, most of it not. But they come to work and do their job every day. The court runs, I feel efficiently. So yeah, that's, that's the presentation. If there's questions, I would gladly answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. Any questions for the judge, Councilman McHale?
On that projected five full-time employees?
Yes, sir.
How many, how many employees are total in your department, even with, including the vacant positions?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, that's going to say twenty. So in essence, you have about a 25% cut in personnel?
That would be accurate.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Okay. No further questions. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. No one told me I didn't have my mic on the whole time.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Your Honor, if you hold up a second.
Yes, sir.
We have a guest appearance. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your Honor, on that, and I apologize for tapping in late, you had on there the TPS holiday back-to-school drive. Can you explain that? What is that?
What that is, is I was approached this year by TPD, I mean, Topeka Public Schools, to do some sort of back-to-school drive. However, because of our temporary court situation, we're limited right now with one clerk window, so there's, there's not a lot we can do. So the plan is if we could maybe get back by November, in December, we could do a Christmas drive with the public schools and work hand in hand with them. You know, the thought is you bring in gifts, sometimes it's food, and we were, we'll waive $25 towards your costs. That's kind of the, the background of it.
So what does, oh, so it's basically, okay. So it's like a food drive?
Food drive, in this case, it would be for gifts, or I think Lawrence did one for back-to-school supplies. And so we've been talking about it. It's just really nice when we're back in our home with three clerk windows and we could really work the schematics or something like that.
Well, okay, the reason I'm asking with all this speeding, I'm thinking, wow, we're going to do some type of back-to-school, teach them how to drive. That's a, I'm thinking it's an educational piece, but it's all good. It's all good. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Good.
Thank you again, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, Josh.
Okay, we move on to public comment. I have two individuals signed up. Mr. Steve Vogel? Mr. Vogel? Mr. Vogel, have you spoken before the governing body before?
I have.
Okay. So you know the rules?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening.
Receive when you're ready.
Okay, yeah, my name's Steve Vogel. I'm the president of the Shawnee County Landlords Association. I want to comment on property maintenance issues. I'm talking specifically about how chronic code violators are treated. In my opinion, the city has failed to adequately deal with them. As an example, there were three very recent issues to illustrate this. The problems at Timberly Apartments, the down tree issue at Montero, and the air conditioning issues at Capital Corner Apartments, all of which are, were reported in the local media. I want to stress that this has been going on for years. I have, I have with me a Capital Journal article from 2021 that talks at length about an operator from Oklahoma. He started buying properties in 2015 and ramped up his acquisitions in 2017 and 2018. He probably owns over 10% of the rental units in Topeka, and the complaints just keep coming in. I don't see anything that makes me think the situation is getting any better. I watched the council meeting last week where a presentation on property maintenance was given. I heard the same things I've heard many times before. I'm just not seeing the sense of urgency this situation warrants. In my opinion, this cannot be blamed on one person or one department. Fairly or unfairly, for many people, this gives a negative opinion about all landlords. I have asked if these chronic violators are getting substantial fines, but I have not gotten a good answer. I also think some of them may be significantly behind on property taxes. The 2021 article in the Capital Journal says the owner from Oklahoma was $700,000 behind on property taxes at that time. I don't know what the answer is, but I think this is an embarrassment to the city. That's really all the comments that I have, unless there's any questions for me. Thank you.
In this presentation, sir, we don't do a back and forth question and answer.
Oh, okay.
But thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, I have now Amir Kenyatta. Did I pronounce your name correctly, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, good evening. Hi, good evening, the honorable council members. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Amir Kenyatta. I recently relocated to Topeka to attend law school, go Ichabod. But I wanted to come today and share some similar concerns as the first speaker, but from a tenant's perspective. First and foremost, I want to say that finding housing that was affordable, safe, and adequate, I, I found it to be a challenge. And I was so surprised because this is the capital city. So that was surprising to me. And when I say finding plentiful, safe housing, I mean places that don't have broken windows, don't have overgrown vegetation, property management companies that are going to treat tenants respectfully. I found that to be a challenge. And finally, I found a place in District 7 where I reside now. But I think that the, the dynamic between landlords and tenants, it's undoubtedly inequitable. And to the first speaker's point, I, I do think that those landlords who don't provide adequate service, they make all landlord and property managers look bad. But from my own experience in Topeka, the property managers that I've interacted with are just not great. I think that they see tenants as a line item on a P and L, as, as a moneymaker. And I think that everyone deserves a place to live that's habitable, that has proper HVAC, proper heat, that is free from pest control. I think that you have some property managers, not all, that usurp the codes that are in place. So I want to give credit to the council for pursuing the, changing the culture initiative as it relates to property maintenance. I think that's great. I think that enforcing retaliatory evictions, taking a stand on that is great. But I think we have to go back to the basics of municipal code and give tenants a fair shot at getting away from some of these landlords and property managers that don't do it right. And in closing, I will say that as somebody going to law school here, I wish that I could sit here and say that Topeka is somewhere that I want to practice. But with my own experience not finding housing that's adequate, it makes me want to go to another city like Lawrence. I don't see some of the issues with overgrown vegetation and the issues with places that look dilapidated. And so I just ask city council to consider passing a resolution to create a task force so that tenants can have some input in the municipal code if there are any amendments to be made. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No one else has signed up for public comment. We'll move to announcements. Madam clerk?
Next week, the 27th agenda, we will just be discussing the 2025 operating budget. That is a special meeting that has been called by the city manager, and then we will have one executive session after that.
Okay. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing for me this evening.
Governing body members, Councilman Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilman McHale?
Surprisingly, nothing. I know it's a shock.
Thank you. Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing over-prepared tonight, but I do want to speak to the recent violence we've had in our city. I won't speak on anything specifically, but we have to do better for our kids, for our youth around here. It's extremely important for us to take an individual look at how we are treating and how we are bringing up our youth. You know, you, you listen to certain music, you're around certain things, you glorify certain movies and, and whatever the case may be. That stuff has an impact on kids. There's a reason there's ratings on certain music, there's a reason there's ratings on certain films. We have got to be cognitive of the things that we're allowing our children to watch in our presence. I, I think that's, that's one small, simple thing to do, but actually over generations could have a huge impact on how our children are brought up in our neighborhoods and how they see themselves. You know, we talk about positive talk, we talk about different ways to just change your everyday living, that it has a huge impact on kids. And it starts with us. I'm tired of everyone saying the systems and this, and this, and this, and this. It starts with us. We have to make a change in our own homes to be able to bring our kids up in a better society. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dobler, good to have you with us.
Thank you. I have no comments tonight, but glad to be here. Thanks.
Councilman Duncan?
Just a quick thank you and kudos to all the storm pickup that got done and how Public Works and all the other departments, forestry and others, I'm sure we don't even realize pitched in, got out and did some of that work. Because that's, not only that itself, but that's on top of all the other mowing and other things that they're trying to keep up with. So just good work on that, and we appreciate the quick responses to the cleanup. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hoover?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to express appreciation. My district was hit really hard with the storms and, and people learned a lot. They helped each other out. They helped the community out, just pulling limbs off the tree, off the streets and so on, so the crews could even get in. Tremendous community, not, not that you want a tragedy, but tremendous action and, and support. To want to express condolences to the families, particularly the two young people that we lost recently. As Councilwoman Miller said, we all need to work on this. None of us can do it alone, but we all want it to be better. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Two things. One, about the horrific storm that happened last week. And just a huge thank you, again, I'm just going to say, I, you know, I think sometimes we can say so many thank yous that they become kind of, you know, moot. But really, when it comes to the response with Public Works, with all the city crews that have helped in the beginnings of the debris pickup, and also a huge shout out to Evergy and Laura Lutz, who really took a lot of time with, with me to, you know, give updates as we could to folks in, in some areas that were deeply impacted. When we got up the next morning and I reached out to new assistant city manager Copley and told him that, you know, we had started to look at the damage in Oakland and in North Topeka, and the first thing that he had said is that it looked like a war zone. And in Oakland in particular, that is not an understatement at all. The cleanup is going to last some time, continue to be communicating with a lot of folks throughout the district. And city, assistant city manager Copley, I mean, I bombard him with emails on questions that people have, and he is just so good with responding. And it's really, really appreciated because there's a lot of anxiety in the community since, since the storm has come around. Because longtime Oaklanders have never seen this type of damage. And thanks to the county, Nelson and Scott, for their prompt responses as well. The other thing I just want to speak to real briefly is, you know, the public comment that we have had about the landlord-tenant situation, the shady landlords that we have here. It did not take a year or two or 10 to get to this point where we're at, where we have such an issue with so many bad actors in this city. I mean, I cannot even tell you, begin to tell you the number of meetings, phone calls, emails, texts, onsite visits that city council people are having, dealing as this all starts to break open, if you will. I personally think that we're probably not going to have enough staff for it. That's just me. I also think that what has taken years of disregard to, for tenants to live in such inhuman conditions, it's not going to take a year or two or three to clean it up. So there has to be some grace in this and understanding that unless you are looking at what happens day to day within the city and with the city council reps, you're not going to know just how immense the work is that's being done right now. And I mean immense. The other thing that we have to understand, while we know that there are any number of shady landlords, and we know who the huge one is, we also have to understand, and this is really coming more and more into my, into my view, as more apartment complexes start to get in contact with me, the tenants there about their living situations, is that tenants have to take the responsibility to understand what their rights are under the law. You cannot force anybody to know that, you cannot force anybody to learn that. And I hate to say this, but as a city council representative, there's not enough of me to go around to walk everyone through the process. And with the situation that's going on, in particular at Timberly, that need is, it is just huge for tenants to understand how to act on their own behalf. And it's not just old systems within the city that have failed them. It's the state that has failed them. It is the feds that have failed them. And so I think that we have to look at the whole webbing of this whole cluster because it's complex and it's not going to be easy to fix. So I understand where people are frustrated. Believe me when I say with this changing our culture of property maintenance and the intricate amount of work that we have had to do, staff has had to do to help change the narrative within the city so that we can help change the narrative in the city outside of City Hall, it's more hours than you could ever even understand. And I'm not making excuses, but what I am saying is everyone is trying. And do we need to do better? We always can do better. But we are faced with the behemoth of a problem right now. And I think- And I think that we're only starting to scratch the surface. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to comment tonight, but I am going to ask all of my colleagues and all the people listening to keep our young people, our city, our citizens, just keep our town in prayer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I too would like to compliment the city staff that have responded so quickly and efficiently to address the large amount of damage that has occurred in our city. I drove around too and just couldn't believe it. I was fortunate enough, in our part of town, we had a few branches down, but nothing like what Oakland experienced, or Bot Wynn, or any of them experienced. But on a lighter note, I'm glad that Councilwoman Ortiz wasn't out there trying to help the crews and run into some more poison ivy. So my compliments to the workers out there. So my compliments to the hard work that's being done. There is a need for two executive sessions this evening. If the city attorney will read.
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 45 minutes to discuss one or more matters in litigation or possible litigation deemed privileged under the Attorney Client Privilege Act, as allowed under KSA 754319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room of the Cyrus K. Holiday Building. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations, city attorney Stanley and other staff the governing body finds useful.
Okay, you've heard the need for an executive session. Is there a motion to move, motion to go into executive session by Councilman McHale, seconded by Deputy Mayor? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Are you opposed?
Aye.
We will recess into executive session. We'll take about a 10-minute break. That should be sufficient, since Councilman Duncan isn't here. And then we'll resume our conversation. Okay. We've completed our discussions under our first executive session. Now, action has been taken. There is a need for a second executive session. City Attorney?
The motion would be to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 30 minutes to discuss the acquisition of real property for a fleet garage as justified by KSA 754319B6. The open meeting will resume in this room in the Cyrus K. Holiday Building. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations, city manager Perez and other staff he deems necessary.
Okay, thank you. Need for a second executive session? Is there a motion to go into second session? From Councilman McHale is a second, from Councilwoman Hofer. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay. I have a question.
You have a question?
Yes, have we extended the time?
Yeah, that's true.
We have not, so it seems like a motion.
Okay, don't, don't do it. Let's move on.
Let's just do 15 minutes.
Just talk fast.
Yep, we're good.
Okay, well, yeah, just come back in 15, less than 15 minutes first.
Okay, we'll immediately recess into second executive session. We've concluded our discussions under our second executive session. No decisions have been made. No further business coming for this body. The need was adjourned.